Oh my gosh, who's setting this thing?
Some ape?
Apparently. Got it all.
Do we really have a 70-slide presentation on the first floor?
Yeah. Got the presentation.
Good morning and welcome to the February 1st Board of Supervisors meeting. Join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and please be seated. Okay, let's start out with item number one, recognition of Manuel Jimenez as reseated of the United States Department of Agriculture's National Institute of Food and Agriculture's 2010 National Extension Diversity Award. And at this time, we'll call Jim Solins up to say a few words, please.
Jim Solins, UC Quantifician. Chairman, thank you very much, members of the board. You may go. It's certainly our honor today to have one's Manuel Jimenez. Many of you have met Manuel. He's been a partner laser at UC Quantifician for over 30 years. They've received a team award in the Small Farm Program, University of California, for the efforts that they've had of small farms in California. Those small farms often represent a diversity clientele, Hispanic, Romulan, several other ethnic groups. And Manuel has, his team effort has been to develop an alternative crop which has been very successful and is being recognized for it today. You may know him as Manuel Groll Newberry, Sammle Team Battle. He's also grown fathers, toddlers, and other crops. We have a family that grow here, diversity consists of small crops you've met in my experience. It's a privilege for me to be able to present this proclamation to Manuel. Actually, I've known Manuel, I've been on the board supervisors now the last four years. I know him to be not only excellent at work, but also excellent at what he does to help the community. In the community of Woodlake, they have botanical gardens. Manuel is not just a mastermind behind botanical garden, he's the master of the botanical garden. And it has existed these number of years and expanded because of his leadership and influence. And that includes fundraising, training children in how to work, and identify plants. It's a tremendous, if you haven't had a chance to observe the botanical gardens of Woodlake, I would invite you to do so. They are spread along the order which reaches over Woodlake to Bravo Lake area. And I like to point out that when I was a kid, my dad would point out Woodlake, the lake behind that, that levee you see there, you were not allowed to get up on top of and see it. And now, of course, it's used for exercise purposes and public access, and botanical gardens are tremendous access in Woodlake. And Manuel is the guy, he was the founder of the plant before his creation. So I have a talk with him here, he's been honored for his work with his job as a supervisor. And as Jim mentioned, he's the single person, I think, most responsible for bringing the blueberries to Tulare County, to the valley actually. And so, he has remarkable achievement in his employment, but he's also remarkable in terms of his community services. So it's a privilege for me to introduce this proclamation and congratulate him. It's about Manuel, congratulations. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Manuel, for everything you've done. And, you know, I can remember growing up as a kid in the Terabella area. We'd have an acre and a half of strawberries, which I picked before and after school every day. So these small farmers, that was a way for us to make a little extra income as a young person growing up in Terabella. So these little farms do produce a lot of income for Tulare County. So thank you very much. Anyone else like to say anything?
The botanical gardens are quite a sight in Tulare County. And I know how much work that you put into the gardens, and you should be very proud of the results of all your hard labor. The one thing that us farmers look at is, we look at new crops. We try to find new crops to grow, to make a better living. And I don't, when I travel, I go to the different markets to see what they have in the market center. And because of your research, like Jim said, blueberries is a big crop in Tulare County. So thank you for your efforts for bringing these crops to Tulare County.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to item number two, receive a presentation from Health and Human Services Agency regarding the emergency medical services system in Tulare County. Dr. Hott?
Good morning. It's my pleasure to be able to introduce today Dan Lynch, who's the Director of the Central California Emergency Medical Services Agency, our agency for Tulare County. He's going to present an update on the success of the EMS system in Tulare County. Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. I'm Dan Lynch. I'm the EMS Director for the Central California EMS Agency, which is your EMS agency. We've been here since March of 2004. And I'm actually very honored to talk to you today, to give you an update on the EMS system, because a lot has changed. A lot of great things have changed. And it's a pleasure to actually be here in front of you to talk to you about what's happening and what has happened. Because I think I got to share with you what's happened in order to tell you where we're at today, which I think is an impressive deal. You know, back in August of 2007, the Health and Human Services staff came in front of you with EMS agency to tell you some issues that we were having in our EMS system throughout the county, and even considered the idea of a single ambulance system throughout the county to kind of deal with some of the issues that we were facing at the time. In that board meeting in August of 2007, the Board of Directors gave it back to us and the health staff, saying, "You want a system that is seamless, so that it's out there, that people have access to it, and it's not bound by boundaries and jurisdictions. You want to assure that the closest ambulance is getting to the people that need it. You want strict performance standards in its agreements. And you want ambulance costs to be pretty much consistent across the county, rather than the way it was where it was all over the board." The big thing is, you want us to go back and work with the ambulance providers that existed, and work with them to see where we could go with that. The issues back then, we were really looking at were ambulance provider agreements were weak and unenforceable in regards to any performance standards. There were no required performance standards on the ambulance providers. They could not assure the closest ambulance. We could not assure that the closest ambulance was going to call us for help. There was this rotation of ambulances in the two largest cities of the county that were very archaic. And then, there was multiple ambulance dispatch sites, which was inefficient and caused delays in ambulance response throughout the county. Well, I'm here to tell you that those issues that we addressed back then are gone. We fixed the issue of ambulance provider agreements. We fixed the issue of performance standards. We fixed the issues of the closest ambulance being sent to the call. We fixed the issue of rotation of ambulances. And there's only one ambulance dispatch site, as we speak now, in Tulare County. In March 2009, there was a new EMS system implemented in the County of Tulare. That was after the Board of Supervisors had approved some new ambulance performance agreements with all of the nine ambulance providers in the county. These new ambulance agreements included strict response time performance. It assured the closest ambulance response. It provided an EMS system safety net, which I'll talk about in a second. And it included fines and penalties for when there was failures to meet performance standards. The big difference that I got to talk to you about today, or tell you about, the big difference that's made all the difference in the system in the Tulare County EMS system is the Tulare County ambulance providers. They have stepped up to the plate. They've done a tremendous amount of work, and they've done an awesome job getting this EMS system to where it is today. It's pretty amazing. At the time, it was American Ambulance Visalia, California Hot Springs, Camp Nelson Ambulance, Exeter District Ambulance, Imperial Ambulance, Life Star Ambulance, Mobile Life Support, Three Rivers Ambulance, and Dinuba City Fire Department Ambulance. Some of these folks are in our audience. If you guys just stand up, there's a few of you, Paul, Trent, and TJ. You know, this is just some of the ambulance providers that are here today, who really have made the system work. Thanks, guys. And I don't want to overlook our first responder agencies, because certainly after I get done, Chief Sunderland will remind me that there are first responders out there. The first responders also play a huge role in the system, not just Chief Sunderland and staff, but also all the first responders in all the cities of the County of Tulare. So it's a huge system, and it's a great system. One of the things that the ambulance providers in Tulare County did after those meetings we had, they formed an ambulance provider association of Tulare County. They got together, and they started sharing resources, they started sharing ideas, they started sharing services, but they shared EMS responsibility. It was no longer, "I'm taking care of my own, we don't care about the rest." But they started working with everybody. It was a shared system at that point. One thing that they've had for a while is called TCAD, which is the Tulare County Consolidated Ambulance Dispatch Center. This is a big, for some reason, has been a big secret in Tulare County for a long time. This Tulare County Consolidated Ambulance Dispatch is kind of like the orchestra leader of the system. They are a centralized ambulance dispatch center for Tulare County, and dispatch all ambulances in the county, except for two volunteer agencies, which is Camp Nelson and California Hot Springs, simply because of radio limitations. And they're still dispatched by Cal, excuse me, Chief, I apologize for that. By Tulare County, I'm going to pay for that one. By the Tulare County Fire Department. This TCAD, Tulare County Consolidated Ambulance Dispatch Center, is actually owned and operated and managed by the ambulance providers. And they provide the system-wide dispatch system for all the ambulance providers in the county. It's pretty amazing. But they provide this state-of-the-art ambulance dispatch service for the county, which includes priority medical dispatch, which basically deems when ambulances will go with no red lights and sirens, or with red lights and sirens. They provide pre-arrival care instructions, which is life-saving, first aid instructions to callers, so that they could start providing care to a loved one or someone who's in need at the time of the call. And they have system status management, which is basically a big term for, they manage the system. And this is all done through TCAD, for the most part, in making sure that those resources are out there. Historically, well, even today, the ambulance providers are pretty much responsible for certain response zones that they have always historically been responsible for. But historically, I'll keep using that word, in the past, they were always focused on making sure that services were provided in their area. They were totally focused their resources and efforts on their own individual areas. So we had independent zones, independent ambulance systems. And once they and us put together this new system, we have a shared system. So what happens is, with the help of TCAD as the orchestrator, as the ambulance dispatch center, they're able to position the ambulances for the best coverage. So when one area becomes uncovered, they're moving ambulances to back up another area. It doesn't matter what color the ambulance is, what color the patches on their shoulder, or what color their shirt is, it doesn't matter. They're going across jurisdictions to get the best coverage for the entire county. And I tell you, it has changed the way response times look in this county. They have greatly improved. Because looking back, the way response times were built way back, these were all recommendations. Response times were built off of where the ambulance station was. So they could say, "Well, I can go this far in seven minutes, so this will be my seven-minute zone. I can go this far in 10 minutes, so this is my 10-minute zone. I can go this far in 15 minutes, 26 minutes, 28 minutes, 30, 45." I mean, it was just crazy all across the board. And, but there was no, it was just a recommendation. There was no requirement to do that. But this system, the way it was, could actually have, like a large city could have three response zones. Because if the ambulance provider stations are on the east side of the city, the west side of the city could be three time zones away, if you will. So it wasn't efficient. It wasn't looking at where the population was, it was looking at where the ambulance station was. But that's how the system was built at the time. This is the new response zones. Basically, the ambulance providers are told the green areas of this map are your 10-minute response zone. So they have to be to every call within 10 minutes 95% of the time. And then, in the blue zone, it's 20 minutes 95% of the time. And then also, in the pink zone, the wilderness zone, 60 minutes 95% of the time. Now, we realize that that pink zone is real large in other places, you can't get to by ambulance or anything. So, you know, we work with them on those situations, but we want criteria for the whole county. And we felt that this was good, because the 10-minute zones around the cities isn't just the city boundaries, it's the city boundaries plus one mile, which means that we're capturing the greatest amount of population that are centered around those cities. And these response times that they have are some of the strictest in the country. They're the same ones we use in the Fresno County system, very similar to the ones we use in the Kings County system. So they are very modernized in regards to what the response zones are in the system. And they were very, they helped us get there. The rotation system, if you remember, in the city of Visalia, we had a situation where AMR, excuse me, Mobile Life Support and American Visalia shared the city of Visalia, or the zone of Visalia Zone. And one company like American would cover the south zone on even days, and Mobile Life would be on the north zone on odd, or on even days. So they would, on even days, they each had their own side. And then, on the odd days, they'd flip-flop. And then, on the even day, they'd go back and forth, they'd cover each side of the zone. Well, that was, number one, there was a call volume differential that they were trying to capture, and also a revenue or a payer mix differential, that they were trying to even out between the two agencies. But what it really did for the person was, it did not assure that the closest ambulance was going to the patient. And so, that had to go away. And it did. And that went away. Porterville was the same thing. We had two ambulance providers in the city of Porterville, Imperial Ambulance and Mobile Life Support. And when a 911 call would come in, they'd give the first call to Imperial, the second call would go to Mobile Life, the next call would go to Imperial, the next call would go, and they'd just flip-flop, you know, back and forth, which was great. It evened out the call volume, but it didn't assure that the closest ambulance was going to the patient. And so, that's gone, because it didn't do that. I guess the point of this is, is that with the help of the ambulance providers, the closest ambulance always goes to the call. It doesn't matter what color the ambulance is, the shirt, the closest ambulance goes to the call, regardless of jurisdiction. The results have been pretty astounding. These response times are pretty much for 2010. And you can see, like, in these response zones, the Dinub area, 96%, 95% Exeter, 97% Lindsay, I mean, some of these, 98% in Porterville, 99% in Visalia, 97. These are huge numbers that they're meeting, that basically 97.9% in the city of Tulare, they're meeting response times 10 minutes or less, 97.9% of the time, which is tremendous. It's huge. Now, you know, one of the things that I handed out to you was that booklet from the Tulare County Ambulance Independent Committee, Ambulance Compliance Committee. And that is a report that's done quarterly to a committee that was board-appointed, that reviews the performance of the ambulance providers in Tulare County. And they're the ones that pretty much levy the fines and penalties. And this is a report that I don't think, when you look at it, that is made on any other contractor or any other business or industry. It is something that is really held tight when we're watching the performance of ambulance services. And it's very impressive. And I just wanted to point that out and give that to you. When I talked about the safety net, one of the things we brought up in our presentation back in 2007 is, what happens when an area loses its ambulance services? Because that was a problem. If an ambulance company, or an ambulance service, or an area became vacant or decided not to work anymore, then we have no ability to force somebody or get somebody in to cover that area. That area is just going to have to wait for ambulances to get to it. And that was a real concern for all of us, because that's not how the system is supposed to work. And the city of Lindsay is an example, because prior to the system change, the city of Lindsay actually lost their ambulance services. And there was a problem trying to get coverage for that area, but basically, we worked with the ambulance providers to respond from where they were. So there was, it just extended times of getting ambulances to the city of Lindsay. But once the system started, the providers got together, Imperial Ambulance, Exeter, and Mobile Life Support got together, shared their resources, and said, "We're going to put a 24-hour paramedic ambulance in Lindsay." And that was part of that safety net, all of a sudden, taking on responsibility of an area that became uncovered from their services. The other one I want to talk about is Three Rivers Ambulance. There's some very dedicated and committed people, volunteers, that worked the Three Rivers Ambulance for many, many, many years. And on August 17th, they chose to step out and no longer provide services to the area based on some state decisions regarding the level of care that those folks could provide, because they weren't paramedics. But there were other issues. It was becoming more difficult for them to consistently get the ambulance rolling on calls, and they couldn't meet their response time compliance up in the Three Rivers area. They were generally running in the 50 to 60 percentile in regards to that area. And on August 17th, they stepped out of the ambulance business. And on August 17th, the ambulance providers got together, American Ambulance Visalia, Exeter, Mobile Life Support, and Imperial, got together, shared resources, and now have a 24-hour paramedic ambulance in the Lemon Cove area, which is right now, I believe, in the Lemon Cove Fire Station. And it's amazing, the change of response and compliance out in that area, the enhancement to Three Rivers, Woodlake, and the surrounding areas has improved dramatically. And now, the Three Rivers area is getting response time, I think my spreadsheet or graph on here showed that it was at 90%. I think December was in the 93% range. That means that they are getting a level of service they haven't seen before. And in addition, they're getting a paramedic level of service. So we've really improved the response area and the response time of services in a big portion of this county, which includes not just Three Rivers, but the Woodlake area and all of that area. So that was a big change. And one of the other strengths of the system is system growth. East Porterville, the area, the ambulance provider that covers, the two ambulance providers that cover that area, saw that there were issues of extended response times up into the foothills and Springville and the reservation area and that. And so, the provider has chosen that they're going to open a station out at the Highway 190 and Road 284 area to help get into those areas. And that's what we like to see. They know that there's going to be extended areas. I don't think we would have seen this if we didn't have the system we have today, where these ambulance providers are working so close together. So we've come a long ways. I mean, we now have in Tulare County paramedic ambulances, we have paramedic first responders in two of the cities, we have centralized ambulance dispatch, we have performance-based contracts, we have designated cardiac center at Coia Delta Medical Center for people that are actually having a myocardial infarction or heart attack at the time. We have simultaneous helicopter dispatch for critical trauma injuries and car accidents. We have designated Level 3 Trauma Center now at Coia Delta Medical Center, and county-wide ambulance safety net, which has been a big thing. So as the EMS Director, I'm here to tell you that I believe strongly that the EMS system is working, the EMS system is strong, and the EMS system is saving lives every day. And that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Vanderpool?
Thank you for this presentation. It's really great to see all the improvements that have been made. And I think that it really shows at the bottom line what's important here in Tulare County, and it's not who's getting the calls, who's getting the most calls, fair balance, or anything like that. It's about the lives of the people that live here in Tulare County, and making sure that they get adequate and the best service possible. And I'm glad to see that that's become a priority of the association. And it's really great to see. And as someone who's used this ambulance service, when I got in my car accident, and I've had family members who've been ill, it's really great to see that these response times are improving the way that they are and are accurate, you know, 90-plus percent of the time. That's really great to see. So thank you so much, and look forward to continued improvement, because there's always room to work. And I know that you guys are all working together, and through cooperation, we can always get better. So, thank you.
Roger Cox?
I do have a question. You know, a comment first, slide number five or six, depending on how you're counting on the page. The big difference was the ambulance providers. And I can remember going through the exercise when there was all the concern, and bringing all the providers together, and they did an outstanding job. They stood head and shoulders above everyone else in the room. There were a few people who took lead, and they did a great job. They made many strides forward to get at where we're at today. I do have one concern, though. The, most folks know that there is a consolidated dispatch effort underway right now with County of Tulare, City of Visalia, other, all of the cities in the county with the exception of two. And it's my, maybe I'm misinform, it's my understanding that the TCAD folks have decided not to participate in the consolidated dispatch effort. That's a concern to me. You know, because of what we read in the study, and the study's about an inch thick, I feel like those folks need to be there at the table. They've made wonderful progress. They've taken strides a mile at a time, and I think it's, they need to keep taking those strides. This is a concentrated effort to provide bigger, better service on behalf of all of our first responders in Tulare County. And I consider these guys first responders, because they're there off times before fire or police or sheriff. So I would hope there would be some way to open up discussions with the folks at TCAD to make sure they do become a part of this consolidated dispatch effort. Because we are moving forward, it's something I do see happening in the near future. When I say near future, I'm talking government near future. I'm not talking, you know, private contractor near future. But government near future could be within the next three to five years. So I would hope that the decision that might have been made not to participate can be influenced somehow, and that we can get those folks back to the table and include them in the consolidated dispatch for Tulare County. And if you are aware of that, could you comment on it?
Well, I can only comment that I know, and I don't know if Paul would like to speak to this as well. I know that TCAD is very supportive of a consolidated, they've done it, a consolidated dispatch, and they see the strengths of it. So I'll let Paul Main, who actually is one of the providers of TCAD, but also is the person that oversees the TCAD section of that.
Paul Main, 2323 South Beach, Visalia, California. As part of what the goals and direction of TCAD have been, is we have participated in working with the group that's trying to move this forward for consolidation. We did recently step back away- We did recently step back away from the table to address some needs that we were going forward on with TCAD. There was a request for TCAD to handle the dispatch services for Tulare City Fire. And we needed to focus efforts at that point on that effort and move that forward. As we speak today, there is some new CAD software being installed at TCAD to accommodate both a fire and ambulance dispatch system. And that's a positive move forward. We're not opposed to continuing efforts with the larger group. We did have some concerns with the direction of the budgetary finance side and had some questions for the consulting group that was preparing those. When we get through this part of it and we see kind of the direction of where that larger group's going, we will definitely welcome the opportunity to sit back down with that group and see how we can move that forward.
Thanks, Paul. Sure. I just, thanks for bringing that up, Mr. Cox. My comments really were to say thank you to the providers because I remember at the time when that came before the board, and, you know, it seemed like the simple fix was go to a single provider service. And I remember, you know, the board speaking rather clearly. We wanted to make sure that the existing businesses had the opportunity to step up and meet this requirement, and you have done that. And I think it's a win-win situation. I believe we are, obviously, as pointed out in this report, we are doing a better level of service, say, "we" in a collective sense, from a public health standpoint. We're providing a higher level of service throughout the county, and you are all responsible for doing that. And we're responsible for making sure we didn't just destroy your businesses and just go to a single provider service. And so I think it was, you know, looking back, it was a very good decision the board made, but it would have been a very poor decision if the ambulance providers had not stepped up and done the job that they did, that you have done. And so I want to commend the providers for the work that they have done. And I think we're stronger for it. I remember not too long after we were going through that discussion, a single provider service was being provided in Monterey County, and they decided they weren't going to provide that service anymore. It became a huge issue for the county because, okay, you've got one provider, where's the next one coming from? And in our case, like in the case where we talked about Three Rivers, where we lost a provider, the existing providers just stepped right in and filled that vacuum. That's a strength going forward because we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. And so by having a multiplicity of providers, they're able to respond to those needs, whereas if you've got a single provider service and that person decides they're going out of business, you've got a big problem in your county. So I think we have a very strong and dynamic process, but really, without the strength of the providers stepping forward and doing what you have done, we wouldn't be having this cheering kind of a meeting today. And I just think it's a good news story. And my thanks, please communicate that to the other providers. Our thanks to you all for making it happen.
Appreciate that. Pastor Sheed?
When this issue came up, I was the chairman of the board. And it was EMS's recommendation that we went to a single provider. And I think we were about very close to making that decision. And I remember when it came to our attention as a board, we made the decision, the supervisor Worthley mentioned, that we were concerned about our existing people who were providing those services, and that we felt that we'd like to give those providers a chance to provide a service which would mirror a single provider. And you've done that admirably. All the providers who were actually felt before as competitors have worked together to give us exactly what Supervisor Worthley has said. We have better coverage than we've ever had before. And my hat's off to the providers. It's worked out very, very well. And I hope when we address this issue of consolidated dispatch, that the providers will find that it is economically to their benefit to go to a single dispatch system. And I think it works really well hand in hand with our fire department, who are the first responders. So there needs to be that coordination between our fire department and the ambulance providers. So thank you very much for stepping up, and all the providers for doing an excellent job.
Yeah, I'd also like to commend the collaboration among everybody. You see a need out there, like in our area, we were stationing ambulances out on the east side or up on Highway one ninety. Now they've got a, actually got a building there which they can work out of. So looking at these areas and being able to collaborate together to make sure the response times are cut down has been a great issue. And I'm glad we saved all these people, too, because some of these providers have been with us for years, you know, especially over in my area. So thanks to everyone for all your great work and able to work together to get this problem solved throughout our county. Thank you.
We appreciate it. And I'd like to commend Chief Sunderland for working with us quite rapidly to get a unit into the Lemon Cove Fire Station. That has worked very well for us. It's given us, you know, a rapid station base to work from, to be able to access that area, and that was huge for us, and we appreciate that as well.
I think the experience that you're learning working with Tulare, it would be valuable experience for the consolidated group because you're already going through researching the combined dispatch.
Correct, yeah. I think there'd be some positive outcomes for us to look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll move to our third item on the agenda, presentation from the emergency services during the local state of emergency flooding declaration last December. We'll call on Kevin Marks.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, CAO, council. Today, we're here to, as a collaboration of departments, to give an update of our winter storm events and basically allow an opportunity to go through some of the things that we see were successes, as well as things that we need to work on in the future. There'll be approximately five different presenters, and we'll try to make this really quick and make it where you've got the information in front of you to move forward. As part of the winter storm events process, my name's Kevin Marks. I'm with Tulare County Health and Human Agency, Service Agency. And under the direction of Gene Russo, who is the Office of Emergency Services Director, we've put together this real quick slideshow. The pre, basically, let me just make sure we get there. The, basically, the prevent activities that started, started on December seventeenth, where we had the National Weather Service forecast basically indicating that there was some severe storms coming to our area. And based on that, we started the response procedure by deploying sandbags to different locations throughout the county, notifying residents where the sandbags are, and also notifying the stakeholders in reference to the different weather forecasts and what the possible EOC activation process would be. From there, it started out, obviously, on December nineteenth, where the Visaya and Porter Ville activated their EOC based on the demand of the weather conditions and the immediate flooding within their city jurisdictions. The Tulare County Operational Area initiated their activation on December twentieth and supported the cities with the multiple flooding incidences going throughout the county's jurisdictions. The State's Regional Emergency Operations Center activated on December twentieth. And basically, from there, we started the activities in the Emergency Operations Center with multiple departments and outlining the parameters of how we were going to be successful through this process. From there, the Emergency Service Director, Gene Russo, proclaimed a local emergency, brought to the board on December twenty-first, and provided a declaration to identify that we did have a local emergency and moved forward from there. The Governor Schwarzenegger proclaimed the state of emergency on December twenty-second for Tulare County, as well as for several other counties within the state. The federal disaster declaration was approved for Tulare County on January twenty-sixth, which would make the additional public assistance eligible for emergency work to repair and replacement costs for the county. All counties in California were eligible to apply for assistance through the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Preliminary damage assessment conducted by CALIMA and FEMA, which was a team that came out and helped us, and basically, we went out with us to look at all of the different issues and concerns of the county, happened on January fifth. What that did was it allowed us, it allowed the county to meet the threshold that the county needed to meet for it to move forward as part of the process of identifying reimbursement for the county itself. Counties and cities continue to refine the damage estimates in preparation for submission of project requests. Pre-event planning contributed greatly to our, these are basically setbacks. This is now what I'm trying to get into is what some of the greatest strengths were that we learned from the process and I think we achieved through collaboration with not only our partners, but the city partners as well. Pre-event planning contributed greatly to our preparedness for this event. Web EOC, which is a web-based process, allowed us to keep minute-by-minute document and document the activities, assist with resources tracking, and provide overall situation awareness. Alert TC was used effectively for notifications. We used it as callouts for our EOC, as well as notifying different areas in reference to where sandbags were and what the process was in reference to the different areas that were flooded. The coordination and communication with the city EOCs, we felt was excellent. We actually had, in the City of Visaya, Andrew Lockman, one of our OES administrators at the EOC in the City of Visaya, from the minute that they opened their doors till late that evening, coordinating with Amber Smith, the EOC manager for the county. Also, the coordination with two-one-one, which is the referral system that's run by United Way, was a very integral part of the whole operation in disseminating information to the residents of Tulare County. One thing to point out is the Assembly Speaker, John Perez, has agreed to sponsor a state resolution proclaiming February eleventh as two-one-one day in the state of California. We wanted to bring that to your attention because there'll be a presentation coming forth after that date. Other greatest strengths, logistics fulfilled all the resource requests without external assistance. Resources were provided to the City of Porter Ville, City of Woodlake, and Fresno County. Fresno County actually ran out of sandbags, and Tulare County stepped up to the plate and provided some assistance up in the Tulare County area, Fresno County area, to help mitigate some of their flooding issues. Development of ongoing information reporting on where road closures were to the public was integral part of the PIO, which will bring up some of the issues as well. Areas for improvement, obviously, lessons learned. We learned on an ongoing basis of what some of the mistakes are we make, and hopefully, through debriefings and so forth, and through all the partners, we're able to mitigate some of these issues for future issues. We identified additional EOC staff and enhancing the EOC staff levels earlier during and on, during an event, develop clear notification thresholds and processes for providing situation updates, provide more specific training for EOC sections, familiarize staff with forms, systems, and processes, and improve internal coordination of public information activities. Right now, I'd like to introduce Allison Lambert, who is our Public Information Officer for OES, who will walk through the next process of the process here.
Thank you very much, Chairman, Board. As the Public Information Officer for the EOC, first, I'd like to say thank you and commend the team that made up the public information. That was myself, the county PIO, sheriff, fire, staff from RMA, HHSA, and throughout the county. Some of our greatest strengths that I'd like to highlight is really the coordination that we had between myself as the lead PIO and the PIO team with our local media. They were one of our hugest assets in that they were helping us disseminate information around the clock. They were utilizing both their broadcast and print mediums, as well as web and social media tools. This led to a constant flow of updated information, not only on locations of sandbags, road closures, where residents could get information, and information numbers such as two-on-one and our one-eight-hundred line at HHSA. Flexibility of county-elected officials and EOC staff. What we do, as you know, in our role as public information officers, is gather all of the pieces of the puzzle to create one large picture. And one of the greatest strengths was being able to have clear communication with EOC staff, both inside the EOC and in the field. As we all know, our county is very wide, and all of our public information officers, we have fire, sheriff, out in the field, we are communicating in the EOC, we had elected officials such as yourself making yourselves available at all hours of the night, we had staff from all of the agencies making themselves available. It was a constant flow of communication. Myself, and I know some of the other PIOs, were getting calls twenty-four hours a day with the coordination and being able to put that official face to the message greatly strengthened and tied it together for our community. I believe one of our greatest strengths also would include the use of technologies. Many of these we've used in positive events that we've had for the county, such as social media, obviously, we've been doing web updates for some time. But this was the first disaster since our H-one-N-one. But this was the first disaster that we not only used web updates, but we also used social media tools. And our CAO, Gene Russo, mentioned Twitter as the disaster was proclaimed. That was actually a very effective tool. This was the first time we used a social media tool in a disaster. We could effectively communicate both with our media partners, with other agencies, other counties, with the state. And we were actually, I know at some points, I was taking actually interested questions from community members, and being able to send them messages and communicate in that manner just offered us another platform to get our message out to the community. Some of our areas of improvement, we have a policy and procedure that we work under in our EOC as the Public Information Officer and the PIO team. What we experienced through this particular disaster is that we really want to refine that process. And what we're doing right now is we're working together with the PIO team that makes up the county PIOs, and we're really going to outline a manual that can be taken. So the information no longer is housed within each of us, but actually is more focused on the team. And actually, refine the process of the hierarchy of each of our roles. One area that we're going to be improving on is forming an official joint information committee. At this time, it's been quite unofficial. We work together in meetings, different projects, phone calls, emails. But this really brought up the need for us to not only have them within our internal agencies, but across the board. We've begun a process underway in HHSA. I'm currently leading up that we're actually having our PIOs meeting quarterly. And this will just allow for better flow of communication so that when we do arrive on the disaster scene, we know what all of our other projects have been coming into it, we know where we stand with this, and we just have a better working relationship. Last but not least, right now, we're in the process, we have been, last fall, we began identifying areas that we could provide translation materials. That's been a survey that's been going on for us some time. The disaster, I think, only highlighted and made us realize how important that truly is. We have a bilingual specialist who actually provided us twenty-four-hour, around-the-clock service on translation for Spanish materials. We also have staff identified as backup individuals should that staff person not be available. For me, what I saw in this disaster is that although we may have For me, what I saw in this disaster is that although we may have Plan A, B and C ready, I'd really like to see us move forward with that survey so that if all of those dominoes are down, we still have a piece to pick up on. And whether that be contracted with a local agency, statewide or national, we can have some form of contract set up. In a disaster, we not only can provide English communication, Spanish communication, but also the other languages that are here in Tulare County. I believe that that would strengthen our message and be able to get that quicker, faster, more efficiently through the communication channels we have. I think that from the public information side, this was actually, this disaster for us gave us an opportunity to see where our strengths were, where our weaknesses, but also really highlight that I personally believe with the use of the team that we had together, the use of social media, communication with our media contacts, not only locally but at the national level with the Associated Press, we were able to have the most informed disaster, if you will, that we have so far in Tulare County's history. So, thank you very much, and I'd like to introduce Chief Sunderland.
Good morning, Board. Steve Sunderland, Fire Chief, Tulare County Fire Department, 907 West Visaya Road, Farmersville. The Fire Department calls for service amounted to 199 calls countywide. The breakdown, of course, as you can see here on the slide, is more in the north than is the south, 115 to the north county and 84 to the south county. This all occurred in that timeframe from December 19th to January 3rd. It was a significant increase to the call volume received at FireCon. We experienced high water, not just at Sand Creek, but this is the one slide I had that demonstrates the high water issues that we had. These fellows are, as you can see, trying to prevent an overtopping of the levee there in the Orocy area. The time spent, total effort, we had extra help firefighters committed to roughly, well, which you can see here, these are estimated numbers. We have refined the count, I just didn't have the information until this morning, so I expect these numbers to go up. But 1,557 hours were committed by individuals from our extra help workforce, 906 hours from our full-time staff, for a total department effort of 2,463 hours. The related cost or the estimated value of our effort department-wide, just over $36,000, as you can see the breakdown here for extra help and full-time staff. Deer Creek Falls, this picture looks a little fuzzy because it's raining to the extent that when this picture was taken that it was raining. This is up in the Hot Springs area. It is above the confluence of where Tyler Creek dumps into Deer Creek. This is normally just a sleepy little trickle coming down the hillside in a seasonal time of year. This water flow did contribute to the road washouts in the Terabella area that were relative to Deer Creek. Here's two of the slides that RMA has provided on the Deer, I think this is Road 224 if I'm not mistaken and around Avenue, Johnny, where are you, 80?
Avenue 96.
96. The water you saw on the slide coming down the hill prior to this contributed to the damage we have. The one thing that I wanted to comment too about the Storm Response Procedures Guide is that this is the first event that we were able to have a guiding effort, if you will. It is a very well-done document. I want to commend Andrew Lockman and Amber Smith on the work that they've done. It not only identifies levels of response and recovery, but it goes and identifies pre-event work to be done, inventories and locations of resources to be stored in anticipation of a wet year, way ahead of any storm predictions. I think by participating and following the recommendations in the guide, we, the Fire Department first responders were able to stay way ahead of the need that the storm events drove us to. If there was one thing that I would recommend to develop further, it's the use of incident management teams or area command in the north part of the county and one in the south part of the county, which would serve as multiple incident coordination point and then funnel information to the EOC. It would take some of the stress and the immediate workload out of the EOC and make a better division of labor, if you will. And the EOC folks could be more focused than on management issues and coordination issues countywide. That's my presentation. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions, but great job over in South County.
Thank you.
County Fire did an excellent job.
I'm Assistant Ag Commissioner for Tulare County. I'd like to give you a little information on the impact of the rains on agriculture. What am I doing here? Do this one. Overall, we see that the December rains had an overall positive effect. It boosted much-needed recharge of groundwater, snowpack, definitely improved the feed for livestock, for range and pasture. However, there was just too much of a good thing in a short period of time, and so besides the silver lining on that cloud, we ended up with some damage to crops, livestock and farm infrastructures. Growers had some physical damage to irrigation systems, field roads and ditches. It's kind of hard to put an assessment on those because a lot of those repairs are done in-house by the growers. We're working with EOC and Farm Service Agency and will try and get our growers any assistance that they're available. The citrus harvest came to a screeching halt on the 17th. You can't pick wet fruit, you can't pick soft fruit. We were down for about 10 days. It really affected our facility's ability to complete their orders for the holiday season, especially domestic sales. We see some citrus rind quality affected, some incidence of brown rot. This is countywide, but it can vary very much between certain orchards. Also due to the excess water, alfalfa is one commodity that we're going to be watching because it's very susceptible to dieout and fungal problems. We are working on this and we're putting together some estimates as we speak. The dairymen had to deal with lagoons that filled to capacity, sloppy paddocks, keeping cows dry and up on higher ground. They had to get some loafing material and keep the livestock dry. We saw some losses in milk production due to the rain situation, ranged from 2% to 5% for one week period due to the physical stress on the cows. And there will be some losses to stored feed, that's from standing water and also from exposure to rain. It's going to take some time to assess. We don't have any firm figures right now. We're working on this also in conjunction with our crop report and making contacts with the growers. Just milk itself is over a $1 billion commodity in 2009, so even a small effect on that relates to millions of dollars. And so we are working on those figures and we'll continue to work with EOC and any other agency and FSA in Tulare County to help our growers get whatever assistance may be available to them. Thank you.
Chairman Ennis, members of the Board, James May, Resource Management Agency Flood Control Division. As has been noted, Tulare County's flood response systems were tested by the December events. Response requirements varied countywide and within each of your districts. There were a few failures of our natural water courses as well as several irrigation facilities that exceeded their capacities, allowing water to flood areas typically within flood zones. Two pictures of Deer Creek show the strength of the flows breaching the roadway and washing away several acres of land west of Road 224 during the second storm phase. You'll notice here is the original flow right around on the north end of Road 224 at Deer Creek, and here's the result that it wiped out this whole area here that's right here. So it's quite strong flow. Deer Creek also breached its levees near the Pixley Wildlife Refuge, combined with storm flows in the White River that reached the Allensworth Community, Highway 43 was close to closure. The county's enacted ordinances to comply with the National Flood Insurance Program served to remove or alter development in flood-threat designated flood zones. With these precedents, flood response activities by the county forces are more effective in minimizing damage to public and private property. We still had some structural flooding in our designated flood zones such as in Yedam, but it was much less in scope. Leveld agricultural areas, as might be expected, did experience large areas of uniform flooding throughout the county, including the Cottonwood Creek area behind the jail. In Tonyville, RMA staff provided, or modulated the flow in Lewis Creek, minimized flooding in that community. We were fortunate to benefit from some of the remaining historic railroad berms that divert storm flows to established water courses. The vast majority of reported flood-conditioned areas, it can be plotted in the county's 100 and 500-year flood zones. Not that some of these areas should not be developed, but special development criteria must be followed to do so. The non-uniform distribution of rainfall countywide limits the bracketing or classification of a storm to any historic level other than between a 25- and 50-year storm. I remain available for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Johnny Wong will introduce the road situation.
Chairman Ennis and members of the Board, I'm here to talk about the roads update to the infrastructure that we have on our roadways. During this flood event that began on, that began on December 17th, the county encountered roadway flooding, community flooding, road washouts, mud and rock slides, and the county road crew performed tree and debris removal, sandbag distribution and roadway closure. After the flood event, there will be cleanup, repair of the work, damage estimates, reimbursement and strengthened improvements. On the strength, I would like to call it more of a highlight that the county road department did, so I'm going to put a little twist on that one there. On roadway flooding, the county encountered many road floodings where on some roadways, the depth of water was in excess of 2 feet. What you see here is Road 40, north of Avenue 0 and Avenue 56 at highway 43 where we had some flooding on the roadway. For community floodings, we did have several communities that did flood. For instance, here in this slide here on Porterville, on Plano and Worth, Estrathmore, there on Orange Belt, just north of 188, Avenue 188. In Seville, we had some flooding there on 156 South 384, and we did have some flooding in Tonyville. For road washouts, this seems to be a very popular one for each and every one of us. This one is on Road 224, I'm hoping this one has a lot of bang for the buck here. This one is at 224 between Avenue 96 and 112 at Deer Creek. There was another popular one on Road 88, and you can see all the debris and the washout of the roadway. This one leads to the Pixley Wildlife Preserve. For rock slides, we had many of these rock slides, and most of these did happen up in the mountainous areas. This one happened on M112. We are fortunate that the rocks that did fall were very manageable by us, that we can push those right out of the way. For mudslides, again, it's very prevalent in the mountainous areas. As you see here, we do have one shown on M52. Down trees, again, very prevalent in the mountainous areas, but the valley floorhead is sheer as also, such as this one shown on Road 234, just north of Avenue 80. And then there is debris removal. As you can see, we have our county employees here using a big rod trying to break up the debris that's held up on the bridge. We did have other bridges that the debris could be in excess of 100 feet just back up to the bridge. In that case, we do use an excavator to clean it out and put it on the banks. During the flood event, there was a massive need for sandbags, and the county road crew delivered or provided at least 250 tons of sand at various locations around the county for self-serve sandbag filling. On top of that, the county road crew delivered prefilled sandbags to at least 14 communities and to numerous locations that were needed for the flood fighting event. During the flood event, there was a total of about 70 road closures. To date, there are still seven that are closed pending repairs or that the road is either wet or muddy. In addition to the work done, the county did a lot of road closure and erected hundreds of signs, and I would like to say that's probably in excess of 1,000 signs that we put up for the safety of the public. Cleanup. After the flood event comes to cleanup such as, as you see here, sweeping the debris off the roadway and the beginning of removing the excess debris at the creeks. And on top of that, there is repair work. Our repair work is numerous, such as we do some blade patching, a lot of podo patchings that we had to do. And in this photo here, what you see is we're putting a new pipe in so we can be sure the next time around, water goes in the pipe and not over the road. I think that'd help out. And then we have emergency repair work. That is something that we need to do to be sure there is access that the public needs. And what we're doing here on Road 88 is we are doing emergency road repair work to gain access to the Pixley Wildlife Reserve. The county right now is still evaluating the losses that we're incurring. Preliminary estimates are still, I'm going to set that at four and a half mil until we have more finalized numbers. Reimbursement does come through two financing options here. One is through FEMA that covers our local roads, and the other one is the Federal Highway Administration, better known as FHWA, for our major roads. Strength and personnel, which the highlights that I see is that our road crew worked long hours in adverse weather conditions to ensure public safety by closing the roads, clearing debris and cleaning drains and culverts to maximize water flow, and the road crews did work many long hours in pumping water away from homes in danger of flooding. Also, the county, there was great cooperation between the road districts as they efficiently coordinated personnel and equipment between districts to effectively handle any emergency situation. I was very pleased with the way our county personnel between districts talked to each other and made things happen when the time came, when things were needed. Another thing that benefited us was the amount of Another thing that benefited us was the amount of knowledge that our road crew had, and it's just not the road crew itself is the superintendents. I can't say that their experience is as long as I've been here because I'm pretty old. So that didn't quite do it, but if you take half of my age and they've had knowledge of 25 years of fighting these floods here, and they've been in these situations at least more than once, it really gave us the upper hand. Communications between staff, admin, and other departments such as fire sheriffs and purchasing were excellent. It was a total joy to work with every other entity, and it made our job that much easier. All parties remain vigilant in potentially problematic areas and provide a continuous update on such areas. The improvements. At first, there were some duplications of sandbags and sandbag deliveries as they came in, but as we established a central point of request for sandbags through Fire, Common, Purchasing, it allowed better communication and distribution, and things, I believe, went very, very smoothly. We did have a little bit of a delay in unloading sandbags, but in cooperation with the redevelopment agency that loaned us two bobcats along with forks on it, it really helped us out in unloading sandbags at various locations within the county. I have a special thanks to the fire department. They've really helped us out here. As you can see in this picture here, this is on Orange Belt, and they helped us out with the pumping of the water that was endangering homes right along Orange Belt there. I really do appreciate that. The coordination and assistance in helping the public by providing the sandbags where needed was also a big help for us, too. And on top of that being our eyes and ears, that we can be everywhere and they let us know about potential problems in many areas, that is just greatly appreciated by the fire department. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. You're welcome.
Good morning. My name is Larry McCarty. I'm a lieutenant with the Tulare County Sheriff's Department. It was a sincere pleasure to work in the EOC. It was teamwork, and it was personified. I couldn't believe that we pulled together that quick. This event was happening so fast, and we identified items, we overcame them, and we made it a true experience. The sheriff's department received approximately 396 flood-related calls for service. These calls were either RMA requests, went to county fire. We conducted two overflight missions and got some aerial views and photographs so we can get an idea of what's occurring countywide. Our Detentions Division produced 49,820 sandbags, of which 28,860 were delivered. On the flood-related calls, approximately 180 of those were within a 24-hour period of the December 17th through 20th weekend. The sheriff's department utilized full-time staff of 247 hours with approximately 14 hours of overtime and a total of 261 hours. The costs were a total of $14,127. And equipment, $15,000 totaled that the department had. We had $40,000 in damages. There was a leak in the storage room to our IT, and there were some electrical equipment damaged. The total cost of the sheriff's department is $20,522. Excuse me. The, like I said, the strengths was teamwork. Obviously, the effort that the county has put into the EOC and the training paid off dividends. Obviously, we need to, there's always room for improvement. I think as we sat down and identified issues, it came up. It's just like anything else. When you first start looking at it and you experience it, we always try to make it the better. Operationally, I think that what I was missing was some awareness that was occurring, and Gina Rousseau and I discussed the fact that we probably needed to have some monitors in there so we can track the calls for service, see what's pending, what's happening. But other than that, it was, it went very well. Do you have any questions?
I do have a question, Mr. Trump. I remember going out to the jail facilities and the flooding that occurred in that one building. Is that included in your cost estimate? I thought the damages, they were quite a bit more.
That is not because RMA buildings had done the assessment, and they were, it was my understanding that was all included, all buildings were included in the RMA building site.
Okay, that's, so it's not part of the sheriff's. Yours is basically based upon hours and time spent, doesn't include a capital damage that was done to your facility.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll finish off the presentation. I apologize for the length, but this was a significant event. You know, it was a pleasure to work with the representatives from each one of the departments. They worked their tail off. I do want to thank at this time the EOC staff that helped bring this together. Kevin Marks, Andrew Lockman, Dave Lee, and Amber Smith, who's out and is probably going to have her third baby in the next week or two. I wish her the best.
Bet she held up.
Yes. But again, I just want to thank the EOC personnel. The level of coordination that Larry talked about, Johnny talked about, was just tremendous. Johnny, you look refined as heck this morning. I'm very proud of the job you did and working with fire and working with sheriff. These folks, as Johnny indicated, have gone through this before. Depending on who you talk to, this was either a significant event or just a drop of water. From my perspective, it was significant. It's standing out on Road 224 at Deer Creek. It was a creek is probably not the best term for that body of water. You know, I do want to point out a few other things that came out of this. You know, we used the two-on-one system as indicated. We used social media for the first time, and we're only going to refine those efforts going forward. This was a tremendous learning experience for everyone involved. We are going to have a Golden Garden exercise in May, which will be a challenge to outdo this particular event, but we did learn a lot. And the reality is, these folks have gone through it, and just to conclude, the level of coordination between the roads department, fire, and sheriff is tremendous, and I applaud their efforts. And the county of Tulare citizens are better off because of their efforts. So, thank you.
Just to comment, first, I do want to commend our staff and employees because I know they, I mean, it really, this is a great report. I've seen much greater damage done from flooding events, and I think a lot of the reason we had less this time was because of the pre-planning that was done, efforts that were made, and some of it is even off of our radar screen. I know of some things that are done in the Alterigation District to divert waters in ways further upstream that eliminated what we would have had greater damage in the Yedam-Seville area had that not been done. And that brings up another point. I do think we could do more to coordinate our efforts with other agencies. They have resources, they were out there doing their thing. Caltrans was out there clearing channels. Irrigation districts are doing the same. And private people. Chief Sunderland ran across a little problem on Cotton, on Sand Creek where the water was coming in, but it wasn't getting down where we thought it should be, and he went back and found that a farmer had put a dike across there and used it as a ramp to go back and forth on his property. He quickly got out there with his backhoe and removed it, but that just points out that there are other resources out there. And in times of an emergency, knowing what we have, I can remember some of the questions at the EOC about how many pumps do we have, and what are their ages, and what are their capacities? And, you know, we were kind of, well, we knew what we had, we didn't know what other people had, all of which could be then, you know, put towards this effort if it had been even, you know, worse than it was.
A quick response to that. We have, in the web EOC, we have inventoried all of the equipment and pumps in the county owned by agencies. So we know what each other has, and in this particular case, Porterville asked the county for assistance with three pumps, we were able to provide it to them. So we, not only our pumps in our inventory, but we also have a relationship with local vendors to provide them.
There was something else, oh, one last thing I think that we do need to do is go back and really look at our flood control system. I believe we had an incident in, at the Corral School, I'm sorry, Stone Corral School in Seville, where actually our, it was our channel, part of our flood control channel, nobody could identify whose it was. I was told at one point it belonged to Alterigation. I knew that wasn't correct. I think it's part of our system. It turned out that it was filled with trash and so forth and overtop, and that's probably what caused most of the damage that went into Seville and to the school that was there. And I think it's supposed to connect up into a reservoir that was bone dry, sitting there right next to the raging Cottonwood Creek. And so it seems like there's still some work to be done in terms of going back and reexamining what we have, what other people have, again, in terms of resources, and how to, you know, make sure that we connect, keep channels clear. I know that's always an issue, finances, to do that sort of thing, but I just think there's still more to be done in that regard, understanding what our system is, where the problems might be. Someone told me we have an engineering problem that this channel I'm talking about is supposed to connect into this reservoir system but can't or doesn't or something, whatever. So just looking at opportunities, especially now when we have some federal funding that will be coming forth to fix things, there may be opportunities to do some things in these areas to make improvements that need to be made so that we'll be better for the next time around. But I do want to say overall, I think this was a very positive event. I mean, and hats off to the Board of 1970s that before all the environmental concerns stepped in, put a dam on Cottonwood, or I'm sorry, on Sand Creek, because had we not had that dam on Sand Creek, I can assure you, we would have very, very serious flooding, Cutler, Rosy, Dineva, Sultana, because that's what happened 1969, 70, in a similar situation without that dam. So really, it was a very, I think, a very, we really missed having a more, much more serious situation, and a lot of it attributed to our staff and the work that's been done in advance.
Sheriff?
Supervisor Werthley and I were in EOC when we opened up EOC, and I'm sure the other supervisors stopped by, too, but one thing that stood out in my mind, that there was not a lot of confusion in the management of this floodwaters. So that inspires confidence on my part and others who witnessed this, that our EOC program, through experience, has gotten to be very efficient. And I like to point out to the people who participated and those who did not participate that I'm very pleased that we didn't have a state of confusion we've had in the past. And also, I'm glad that we were learning, and we've taken steps from our previous flooding issues to minimize the damage to where we are with this flood event. And I will address the Flood Commission and the Water Commission under Supervisor's comments.
Inspector Vanderpool?
Just wanted to echo the compliments to the personnel throughout all the different departments that participated in the handling of this event. I thought you weathered the storm very well and really did a great job in how you handled everything. I know that the people in my district and throughout the county were very pleased with the information that they were able to obtain and how they saw county personnel handling all the problems that we were dealt. So again, it comes down to the people. We've got great people here in Tulare County working for us, and I look forward to working together with all of you to continue to improve.
I'll make mine short. What I really saw that stood out as a highlight this time is I never once did I hear, well, what's it going to cost? Or who's going to pay for it? That conversation I never heard take place, so I think that was admirable, that everybody kind of stood up, did their job, and worried about the safety of the people and the public first. And then here we are, you know, a month later, worrying about, okay, now, how are we going to pay for it? So I think that was very admirable, that I never once heard any agency say, well, you know, I can't do this because it's going to cost me. Everyone just did their job. So good job, everyone.
I thought you were going to comment you didn't lose a car in this flooding incident.
I was very tempted to say that, but I didn't. But the issue of cost did come up. And what we've learned in the past, when we've had these flooding events or natural disasters, we didn't keep track of our time. We didn't keep track of the actual cost that it takes to mitigate whatever event that we have. But this time, we made sure that all the agencies were well-informed to keep exact cost of what this event, the expenditures of this event. So that way, when we go to FEMA, we go to whoever we go to, we have hard numbers as to our cost, and we have hours, we can use how many man-hours we spent in this incident, which we've never been able to pinpoint before. We tried to solve the problem and forgot about the financial side. So I'm glad we're going to be able to present an accurate report to the agencies that are involved for reimbursement.
Well, in this closing, I would just also like to thank all the different agencies who worked so hard during this event and being on top of it and making sure that the people of this county were well taken care of. So thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to item number four, public comments. This time, you want to address the board on issues? Someone named John that wanted to talk to the board this morning? Seeing no one, we will... Yes?
Hello, my name is Becky Quintana, and I'm here on behalf as a citizen of Seville and a school board member of Stone Corral School. And again, I want to thank Tulare County, especially the fire department, for being there for the citizens of Seville as well as county yard number four. One thing, we're talking about improvement, and I already met with Steve, and the flood control canal that we have in Seville really needs more improvement, being that we need to be more proactive before rain season, that we clear all of our canals. I took a couple of pictures of what we have, and we have debris, weeds taller than I am. We have tires, mattresses, construction debris, all in the canals. And I think during the rain season, that kind of stopped a lot of the water flow. And I think as for improvement, is that we need to clean out our ditches as well as ELTA irrigation as well. They do have a lot of debris in their canals. But I want to again thank the county for your hard effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to Board of Supervisors matters. Supervisor Vanderpool?
Just a few things this week. I'd of course like to mention, I think everyone probably knows this, but next week is going to be the Farm Show, the World Ag Expo, and the city of Tulare. It's going to be a great event, lots of vendors, and hopefully lots of people will be attending. I should look forward to another great opportunity to showcase our number one industry here in Tulare County, and that's agriculture. On the Taste Tulare County front, we're looking forward to working through our countywide effort with the city of Tulare, who's now going to be hosting a farmers' market in downtown Tulare in the next coming months. Looking forward to that. And then also, we began planning and strategizing the Alpa-Allensworth Gang Awareness Forum. So we're looking forward to bringing gang awareness efforts to a couple of communities that are really in need in my area, so.
That's all I have today. Thank you.
Great, we'll follow that line of thought. Last Friday, the Gang Task Force met here in A and B, and the decision was made to Last Friday, the Gang Task Force met here in A and B, and the decision was made to take the youth summit to the junior high school age students this year. And then also, a decision was made to update the Task Force Action Plan, which was last done in February of '09. So April 29th, here in this building, we will have a planning meeting, or a strategic planning meeting, to update the action plan for the Gang Task Force.
Supervisor Wordley?
Only thing I wanted to say was we had a very successful Chamber of Commerce banquet in Dinuba last Saturday, Friday evening, and a good turnout. There's a sense of optimism in the community, and actually, if you were to look around Dinuba, you wouldn't think there was a bad economy. I'm not saying people aren't suffering, but there's homes being constructed, there's been a lot of commercial construction going on. So, you know, things look, it's always a sense of encouragement to see those things happening in your community, and I think my wife said, you come away from that meeting feeling like you've been kind of recharged, and it's good to see that sort of thing happening in the light of our economy.
Supervisor Rashida?
Last Monday afternoon, we had a meeting of the Tulare County Water Commission, and in that meeting, we invited the Tulare County Flood Control Commissioners to that meeting. And it's been very obvious for a long time that if we need, if we are to formulate a comprehensive water plan in Tulare County, we also need the input of the Flood Commissioners. A lot of times when we have this amount of water, if we had more places to park this water, it would help us with our recharge and our underground water table. And the other issue that we have is we're starting getting, we're starting to see regulatory issues prop up from how we dispose of floodwater, because the state of California in their wisdom of having more regulations. So we need better communication with our irrigation districts who have a lot of these canals that we channel floodwater through. So I think as we open the dialogue with the, with the Flood Commissioners, we're gonna be able to come up with a more comprehensive water plan for Tulare County. So the charge from the Water Commission was to the Flood Commissioners to determine really what their purpose was as a Flood Commission, and how they could engage with the Water Commission to come up with a comprehensive plan. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Last week, we had first meeting of the year for Indian Gaming Local Benefit Committee, which I chair, and this year, we are gonna have some money. Last year, we had none. This year, we'll have $545,000, which will be put into District Five, which is my district, to offset the casino being in our area. So looking forward to getting some grants in from the city, county, the hospital districts, and disperse this money out for the needs of the fifth district. Okay, now let's move on to the consent calendar. Item number 10 is off, and there will be no action taken on this matter today. Any other items that we'd like to pull? If not?
I move approval of the consent calendar less item 10, Mr. Chair.
Moved by Supervisor Vanderpool, second by Supervisor Wordley. Unanimous? Okay. Move to item number six, our timed item, request from Resource Management Agency to approve the California Statewide Communities Development Authority's issuance of tax-exempt revenue obligations through its housing bond program on behalf of the Community Preservation Partners.
Mornings, Chairman Ennis, fellow board members. Roger Hunt, Assistant Director for the Resource Management Agency. This item is, does require a public hearing. The County of Tulare is a member of CSAC, and CSAC and the League of California Cities sponsors the California Communities Development Authority. The authority provides access to low-cost, tax-exempt financing for infrastructure, housing, and economic development projects. Within that is the housing bond program that focuses on low-income, multifamily, and senior housing projects. Community Preservation Partners has applied for up to $7 million in financing to purchase and rehabilitate four apartment complexes in Arosi. The four apartment complexes total 160 units. They have scheduled construction to start in June of 2011 and would complete it in a year. A hundred percent of the rentals would be rent and income restricted. The total cost of this project is 13.4 million, and of course, the financing would be up to $7 million. I believe that we have a representative from Community Preservation Partners in the audience. So available for any questions that you might have. With that, I'm here to answer the questions.
Questions?
If I can, I just, I struggle with this. I know we're not on the hook financially at all for this, are we?
That's correct, we are not.
We're just in charge of having the public hearing.
Right, we're, because we're a member of CSAC, we're required to have the public hearing, and it requires the county's approval for this to go forward.
I just, I look at the, the itemized cost sheet on this, and it ends up being, I believe, $80,000 per unit, at the 13 million.
Well, if you, yes, if you have 160 units into the 13 million.
And the majority of them are two-in-one or smaller.
But it does include the purchase, which is around $6 million, I believe, for the land and the buildings, and I think the rehab cost is probably around $2.7 to $3 million. So it's running around $20,000 a unit, I think, for the rehab cost.
I just, I look at the cost of doing this, and, you know, just wonder how it can be so high. It just looks like, I hope there's someone that, an agency or an oversight agency that looks at these cost estimates and follows them closely. If this were a county project, I would oppose it, since we're just the agency having the public hearing, you know, I'll, I'll support it, but it's, it's difficult, you know, to look at the numbers involved with two-bedroom, one-bath apartments, and the cost it's gonna take to buy it, rehab it, and all the excess money on top of that. I just have concerns that I wanted to express, but I will support this, since we're not financially involved.
Okay, any other questions?
I just had one question, Mr. Hunt. How is this going to be affected, and who's gonna be left with the responsibilities of paying for this? Should the redevelopment agencies be eliminated completely? Nothing?
The redevelopment agency is not involved in this. This is with the County of Tulare, and it's the, the Community Preservation Partners that is the one that's, has that obligation.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I know that the redevelopment agency was mentioned in this agenda item, and that's why I just asked.
I don't recall the mention, mention of them, but it is not a redevelopment agency matter. It is within a redevelopment area, but it's actually a county item.
Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Public hearing, anybody wishing to approach the board? Seeing no one, close the public hearing, bring it back to the board. Move approvals, Chairman. Moved by Supervisor Wordley?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Rashida. Oh, it's unanimous. Thank you, thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move to item 17, request from Resource Management Agency to review ineligible uses and options for the expenditure and allocation of Housing and Urban Development Neighborhood Stabilize Program.
Roger Hunt again, Resource Management Agency. This item is to review the options. There is the Neighborhood Stabilization Program, number three, in which HUD is, has awarded to the County of Tulare $2.8 million. We are also utilizing NSP-1 monies currently. We had applied for NSP-2, but we're not awarded. The action plan is due to HUD by March the 1st, and so we would plan to, once we have direction from you today, return back to your board on February 15th with the action plan. The Neighborhood Stabilization Program is designed to mitigate the recession's impact on housing and to stabilize and revitalize communities. And the amount of money awarded would be, there's a requirement for it to be obligated, 50% of it within two years, and 100% of it within three years. HUD desires that one neighborhood be targeted, but will allow two, but will also require the county to demonstrate that there is success in stabilizing both those two neighborhoods. The money can be used throughout the county, including inside the cities, but the county would still have the responsibility for reporting, since the award is to Tulare County. So there would be the administration and reporting back to HUD. Staff recommends using all the money, and the Ivanhoe Family Apartment Project, which is an 80-unit family, 80-unit apartment project, in which there's also $8.9 million from seven sources already committed to the project. In fact, there's some NSP-1 money, as well as some redevelopment money. The, with NSP-3, that would raise it up to $11.7 million. Just through a review of property values as a part of, from the redevelopment agency side, because Ivanhoe is in a, is an RDA, I was noting that over the 20 years, that Ivanhoe's property values have only increased 40% within that 20-year period, whereas we saw other areas increase significantly more. In fact, using an example, Rich Grove increased over 400% in 20 years. And so Ivanhoe is an area that has been significantly hit by the recession and just overall. So they could definitely use the money. Now, option number two is that your board could direct us to use some of the money to a selected city, or you could, you could direct us to use all the money in a selected city. With that, there comes some, some positives and negatives. Obviously, the, the county would have to retain control over the funds, but we would be required to demonstrate that the stabilization has occurred in that, that neighborhood, whichever neighborhood it is. There'd be less funding, obviously, to the Ivanhoe project if a portion of it went, or all of it went. So with those recommendations, we're, that's why we're recommending for Ivanhoe, but we're ready to take direction from your board.
I appreciate the, the report, I thought was very thorough. One thing that struck me was that this Ivanhoe project is something where you have a lot of pots of money, and it's like a bicycle chain. Everything has to work together to make it come together. Seems like this is sort of the linchpin that makes that happen, especially the ability to get the 4% loan funding for the mortgage portion of this project, which is not, is a non-competitive, as I understand it, situation, so it's a sure thing, whereas they don't have this funding and they have to go out and compete for a higher percent of interest. It's not, it is a competitive type thing, you may or may not be able to get that, plus it's that much more expensive. So it seems like this is a great opportunity to sort of focus our funding in this one place, make sure that this happens, and then we'll, we'll have something to show for it, whereas we may sort of scatter our money around and not really see the benefits that this can provide. It has to be the right place, the right time, the right project with this funding available, and so I would recommend that we follow the recommendation of our RMA folks, and I know if this is in the form of a motion, they're asking for, for us to, to recommend, I guess we could move.
We have other discussions, too. Yes. Supervisor Vanderpool?
I, I just had a question. You, you mentioned over the last 20 years, the effect of the recession or the, in the housing markets of respective communities throughout Tulare County. Rich Grove values increasing by 400%, Ivanhoe only 40. What, what were some of the other areas increases? And I mean, there had to be some others that were fairly close to Ivanhoe, because I don't imagine that all of the different redevelopment areas have increased by several hundred percent.
And the, I looked at the eight RDAs, and Ivanhoe was the only one that was in that range of 40%. The others were at least 100% increase.
Okay.
There were three of them that were close to 400, or as I mentioned with Rich Grove, exceeded 400. The other two that were close to 400% were Cutler, Arosi, and Goshen.
Okay, thank you.
What, when you brought this, is our, I, I look at this, obvi, for me, as a second dip. When you brought this to us the first time, was the project funded with the NSP-1 and the other CDBG, other pots of money that this board provided?
Was it fully funded at that, at that time? I would have to defer to staff. I believe that at that time, there was a recognition that Corporation for Better Housing was going to have to seek additional financing for the project, but I see Lori Mercer's approaching, maybe she can answer the question better.
Well, and they were gonna have to seek financing anyways, correct?
Yes, the, but less competitive.
That is correct. Lori Mercer, Resource Management Agency, Redevelopment Agency. The project has had to compete for funding the entire time. Each time we have added the different projects, the different grant amounts, it is to try to bolster the ability to compete with the 9% tax credit applications. The application has gone in a couple of different times. It has not been able to be funded through the 9% tax credits. The 4% are not the competitive tax credits, and it needs this additional boost to get it through, to get those tax credits.
Why wouldn't they qualify for the 9%? Or why didn't they?
There's multiple projects that also compete for those dollars, and the other ones were the ones that got awarded for it. Their self-help enterprises also has a project in Goshen, and they were unable to secure 9% tax credits. It's various projects going for those funding sources. It's a very, very competitive environment. We can get a breakdown for you, which ones were funded, and, and find out those reasons. Because we're not involved in the tax credits, we don't have that information at our hands, but we can get it, so.
I just, for me personally, I just see this as a not very creative way of using those funds, to, to a project that's already been, had funds dedicated to it on, I'm looking at multiple funding sources that come through the county, and then to come back and, and do even more. I just don't look at this as being a creative way of spending the money, and there are several ways that the money could, you know, you put one or two of the other options in here. I just think there were other viable options and ways to use that money, or even split the money up, part here and part there.
One of the comments that HUD has made is that any of the projects that did not receive 9% tax credits, those are the ones they also want to see move forward because they're for affordable housing. So HUD has supported the project. We took multiple options to them when we went January 20th to the training and sat with HUD representatives and gone over different, various scenarios, and this is the one that they said they support as well.
Okay, thanks.
And I just had to make, for purposes of disclosure, just say that I was contacted by the Corporation for Better Housing, and just wanted to state that. I will be making my decision here based on the information presented today, not based on that phone call, so. But I also just would like to make the point that I think that there are, this could be, because of the fact that this has already received so much funding, and this could be that a key pin to make the, the chain work, so to speak. However, I always like to see things spread as much as we can throughout the county and not put all of our eggs in one basket. $3 million is a lot of money that, to be devoted to a project that has received funding from multiple sources. So I, I do think there are other areas that could benefit from the use of this funding, and also result in a stabilization of a neighborhood or of a project, so.
Unfortunately, due to the guidelines from HUD, we were required to look, focus on a neighborhood, and we had talked about trying to spread the money around in the county, and they said that they would not approve it.
But, but you did mention earlier that it could go to, say, one other project, and I'm sure there is another project that needs just that little bit to get over the hump too, that this funding could also benefit. And I, I'd just like to see the, the best bang for the buck that we can possibly get.
Just a comment is that... Just a comment is that I think that last comment by Mr. Vandepoel, I don't disagree with it, except that that's not in front of us today. We don't have a project in front of us. We have a project in front of us, and I would think if there were another project, we'd be seeing it. So, and the other thing about this is that Mr. Cox referred, this is not being ingenious enough or not, you know, we should be thinking outside the box or whatever, but, but the point is, the traditional method has been tried and is found wanting. In other words, they've gone to the project, they've gotten all these different grants, they've gone to try to get, to get the grant, the funding for at nine percent, they've been, they've not been successful in doing that, and they are not alone. I mean, we know Self-Help Enterprises has been in this business for many, many years. They've had the same kind of difficulties. So this is an opportunity to make sure this thing happens. If we don't get this, if we don't do this, the potential is there, this project would not go forward, and then we'd have all these funds having to go, be disassembled, and we end up with nothing. So I think, you know, it's, you know, one in the hand worth two in the bush. We get this one, we get it done. We don't get this, we don't have anything certain is going to happen with these funds. We don't want to lose this money, and we don't want to lose this project. So to me, it's, it's not a difficult choice to make, but if there was a better way of using the money, I don't see it in front of us today. We're talking in terms of possibilities. This is a reality.
Just one, one last one. I, I agree, this is a great project. I'm not doubting the validity of the project. Other pro, other agencies use these types of funds to help create homeownership. I don't see this creating homeownership. So I, I, that's why I, I made the statement. It wasn't quite as creative, because I did see other agencies use the monies in different ways who, who created, I think, I'm not going to say, they created other opportunities. So that's all I was saying, there were other prop, opportunities. I do support this, but, you know, I think staff maybe should have looked a little bit beyond that. But I will support this, understanding what's going to, you know, what the consequences are, but maybe it wasn't two point eight million they needed, maybe, maybe they needed one point two or one point six to get them over that hump. I don't know what it is, because it's not in our report. So I just encourage staff, if you're looking for direction, encourage staff to be creative as they look at these funds next time. I don't think there's going to be NSP Four though, is it?
And certainly, we, and certainly, we do have a need for low-income housing in Tulare County, and...
That could be homeownership too as well, though.
Part of our problem was that, you know, as HUD had awarded it to the county, county, we didn't even ask for it. It was awarded, but then they said, "And we'll tell you how to use the money later." And we've been going to meetings, December and Jan, just in January, trying to find out, "How can we use this money?", and then discussing with them, "Here's what's, what we're seeing", and them sort of narrowing the focus for us, as, "We'll accept this, we won't accept that." So there wasn't as much time to be creative as we would have liked, but that's the only thing I can offer.
Chairman, I, I, I think I'll make this in the form of a motion, and the motion would be to recommend that we direct staff to move in direction of their, of option one, which is the recommendation to devote the funds to the Ivanhoe project.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Worthy, second by Supervisor Ashida. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
Well, and I, I, I do hope that you will follow up on this with the board and let us know.
We should be back on the fifteenth with our action plan.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move to item eighteen. A request from County Administration Officer, Mr. Gene Rousseau, on the proposed budget for fiscal year two thousand eleven and twelve.
Thank you, Chairman Ennis. Gene Rousseau, CAO. I'll be reviewing the governor's proposed budget for fiscal year eleven, twelve. It'll be a relatively brief overview. I will spend more time in some areas than others. And any additional questions, you can ask me after my presentation or interrupt me. The key points that I'm going to review today are up there. The, the governor's solution to the budget is a combination of budget cuts, as he referred to, as he refers to them as non-tax solutions, minor cuts, and temporary tax hikes, including VLF. The proposed budget overview, as we all, as we all know, is, is, there's a proposed deficit of twenty-five point four billion dollars, eight point two in the current fiscal year and seventeen point two in, in fiscal year, next fiscal year. The governor would like to bridge that gap with a combination of expenditure reductions and increased revenues, not increased revenues, but the extension of the existing tax increases that were part of the budget deal two years ago. In order to get this done, the legislature needs to, to really speed up the process, which they have not been able to do the last, for, for the, certainly my history in, in this realm, but they need to get the, get their acts together and agree on the budget, including the, a special election for the extension of the tax increases. That election would, would be held in June, and unfortunately, the governor's budget does not include reimbursement for the election. Quick recap of the, the proposed budget cuts. They are significant. They're not, they aren't a complete elimination of these programs, but they're severe tinkering and reduction to the service level, service levels to the recipients. One point seven billion in Medi-Cal. Just a brief little, little comment about that. Few of the things he's looking at doing is limiting prescriptions to six a month and doctors' visits to ten a year, along with other more significant reductions to, to payments to providers and what have you. CalWorks reduction of one point five billion, including that is the reduction, they're going to limit the time on the, on the roll from five years to four years, or at least are proposing to do that, and they're going to reduce monthly grants along with other cuts. Points of five billion to the Department of Development Services, point five eight to state operations and employee compensation that they feel they will receive as they start to restructure what the state does and push the programs down to the counties. One point eight billion from special funds is a mistake, so that was, that shouldn't be on this slide. Point five billion to the University of California, so tuition's going to go up, and point five billion to California State University. The recap of non-proposed, what, what is referred to as non-tax solutions, otherwise called cuts, up in Sacramento, is one point eight billion in borrowing from special funds. That was on the other slide, which shouldn't have been there. One point seven billion in property tax shifts, and, and a part of this is the, is, is the elimination, or proposed elimination of redevelopment agencies. For the county of Tulare, we currently lose, we currently have five million dollars of our property taxes shifted to redevelopment agencies in our county, approximately three million to the city-run redevelopment agencies, and two million to our own redevelopment agency. Included, not included in this slide is the proposed elimination of the enterprise zones, which would be a twofold hit to, to development in the state. In addition, he's proposing one billion to be, one time, one billion borrowing or, or take from Prop Ten or first five funds, and almost a billion-dollar take from Mental Health Act, otherwise known as Prop Sixty-three. I, I put the note on the bottom that the budget gap is, some language from the budget, because I thought it was kind of interesting. The budget gap of eight point two billion is one-time in nature, so these type of solutions are appropriate in the governor's mind. Other budget cuts and slash solutions of note to Tulare County. As we are aware, the, we spent a lot, many years trying to preserve the Williamson Act program. Last year, there was, or this, earlier in the fiscal year, there was legislation to fund the program at ten million dollars and hope that it would be saved. Governor Brown has decided to eliminate the current year ten million dollars in funding and has provided no funding going forward for that, for that program. Another item of note is the loss of the county sheriff's child support collections. That would amount to a reduction of seven hundred thousand dollars in discretionary revenues to Tulare County. As we've seen in prior years, continuation and suspension of, of most mandates and, and reimbursements. The elimination of support for veteran service offices, so some veteran service programs are going to go away, including the most recent one for, for folks coming back from military service that the governor Schwarzenegger put in place. That's probably going to go. And then, in addition, there's also the elimination of state funding for libraries, which would be approximately a two hundred thousand dollar hit to our library. The extension of the temporary tax hikes is, is a key component to the governor's plan, not only to balance this year's budget, but to start the realignment process of moving services down to, to counties. Part of the extension, as was agreed to two years ago by the legislature and governor, was a point two five percent surcharge on income taxes. One that kind of hits me a little bit hard is the reduction of the dependent exemption credit, the VLF extension, as I noted earlier, and sales and use tax extension. The total, the total amount that these, this extension would generate is, is, is on the screen, and the asterisks on the bottom right-hand corner to VLF and sales tax, those amounts, which amount to five point nine, are going to help fund, if approved by voters in June, the start of the realignment process of state services to counties. You know, the VLF extension is a significant issue to the county and all counties up and down the state. If the, this is not extended by voter approval or by other means, it would be a significant hit to public safety in the state, especially probation. You know, we've, I've been on a number of CEO conference calls in the last week or two, and probation services as we know it would, would change dramatically in, in the state if this wasn't extended. You can see up in, for our county, it would be almost a four million dollar hit or, and/or a reduction of seventy-one positions in our probation department. The sheriff's department would, would take another significant hit of over two million dollars or potentially lose twenty-four, a little over twenty-four positions. And last but not least, our, our district attorney would also lose. You know, there's a mistake with this slide too, and I apologize. They should, it should be in billions instead of millions. So the, the number of positions in jeopardy are one hundred and three point four. It's very frustrating for me that, that they have included this, they, they didn't figure this out or get it extended in December like a lot of folks had hoped they would. Once again, we're going to be back at the, back lobbying up in Sacramento to get this extended somehow, some way, preferably in the general fund for folks that are adverse to taxes, but this is a significant issue. You know, I know that the, the Sheriff's Association, Probation Association, District Attorney Association are putting a lot of heat on our legislators up in Sacramento to figure this out, and hopefully they do, they do it soon. The governor's, as I indicated, the governor's proposed realignment is going to start, is going to be phased in over a period of time. He's going to start with public safety and health and human services, some of which the details are, are still to be worked out. But here's the schedule, and I know it's hard to read, but the quick and dirty of it is the, the yellow portion of the schedule are the public safety-related programs that they would like to push down, and I'll just spend a, a minute or two on a few items in this slide. The fire and emergency response activities, that's a desire of the state to reduce the level of involvement of CAL FIRE in providing urbanized, finding fire services to urbanized areas. It could potentially be an opportunity for our county to approach the state and, and offer our contractual services in some of the SRA areas in our county. So Chief Sunderland and I have been in discussions, have had a discussion about this issue, and we will be pursuing it if it does go forward.
Gene, just a question about that, does that mean that what we would see is actually there would be no CDF in Tulare County? It would all be Tulare County Fire, and, and we would be contractually providing services that otherwise they would provide?
That's correct.
I know some counties do that.
Yes, that's correct.
And so that is, it's not like we'd be breaking new ground. Other counties have done that.
Other counties have done it. And, you know, we, we had talked when we created the fire department about how eventually we would like to be a contract county, and now's the time. There, there's potentially an opportunity to do that.
If I may interrupt, the contracts that you're referring to Supervisor Worthy have the state paying the entity. In, as I understand, this vision, it would be the reverse, that is?
No, this, it would be the state paying and has to provide services in this area funded with, with realignment dollars or VLF and sales tax.
Oh, okay. That's, that's new since maybe two days ago, three days ago.
Okay, well, we can have a discussion after the meeting, if I can bring you up to speed. Court security's been an issue. It's probably one of the sheriff's favorite topics, the annual ritual of negotiating with the courts on a level of security. The proposal is to create a pot of money based on, I would assume, the amount of security costs, court security costs incurred by the state run through the, the court system. This would take that, that expense out of the courts, create a bucket of money for the sheriffs to, to use, to negotiate with the local court for a level of service. How it works is going to be, is going to be interesting. It's kind of like booking fees a little bit, I would imagine. The next line item is the item that I just mentioned in the previous slide here, the VLF extension, the next, five hundred and six million, that's the, that's the item that I've been talking about that would fund a number of public safety programs, COPS, Juvenile Justice Crime Prevention Act. Booking fees, if this doesn't get extended, then we would have to start to charge cities for booking fees, which is always a really unpleasant situation. Small and rural county sheriff grants, juvenile probation funding, juvenile camps and ranch funding. The bottom line is probation gets majority of that money, sheriff gets its portion too, and it's, it's critical that, that it gets extended. And then there are other, there are other items such as a lot of issues relative to the parole of both low-level offenders and realigning adult parole to counties. There are numbers in, if you see reimbursement of state costs, that's a recognition that this process of realigning services is going to take some time, and this will help fund the state during the realignment process. In the blue area are the, is the beginning of the realignment of some mental health, foster care, and adult protective service, services to counties. And again, the details are, are being worked out. One of the, one of the tenets that we, our CAO association has used with the state is, please provide two things. Make sure the funding is as adequate as possible and provide as much flexibility to locals to run the programs as we see fit and, and that we can use, that the money could be used As I indicated earlier, and I just want to reiterate, there is the proposal to eliminate redevelopment agencies and enterprise zones, and that would be, that would have an impact to our county and to cities for that matter. Last but not least, last year, there was the, due to the passage of Proposition Twenty-two and Twenty-six, it invalidated the transportation tax swap, which I'm not even going to attempt to try to explain this morning. The governor's proposing to extend that seventeen point three percent excise tax and sales tax on gasoline in order to continue funding local road maintenance. And that's my presentation. If you have any questions, I will take them at this time.
Just one quick thought, you know, as I, I'm the chairman of the First Five Commission here in Tulare County. I look at two of the, you know, the pieces, Prop Ten and Prop Sixty-three. How many times have there been attempts to raid these funds? Prop Ten, over the last three years, twice last year, you know, citizens of California overwhelmingly voted over sixty percent, leave Prop Ten funds alone. In Tulare County, it was over seventy percent in favor of keeping that in place. So as I look at some of these things, and I look at the impact to our public safety folks, it's like, you know, is anybody else in Sacramento actually looking at these numbers and realize what the devastation might be as this flows downhill? So it's amazing that, you know, we, we know there's got to be cuts, we know it's going to be painful somewhere, somehow, but again, it appears to be like the state or the governor wants to shove all the suffering down instead of across the board at his level. So very discouraging to see, you know, something like this and realize what the implications are, and we need to be vigilant about letting the folks up there know what this really means to us. If that means, if we're going to lose one hundred and three employees, Kern County's going to lose two hundred, Fresno County loses two hundred, Kings forty, you know, the devastation across the board is mind-boggling.
You know, I, I agree with you real fast. You know, it's critical that these public safety programs get, get, get extended or funded somehow, some way in order to, for counties to be in a position to even consider realigning state services to counties. You can't gut the underlying base service level and then, and then, you know, tap, add more services to, to the locals. It's just not going to, it's not going to work. And I think we've made it pretty clear to folks.
Well, Chairman, as I understood...
Well, Chairman, as I understood the report, the, that one graph that indicated that there, and it's critical that we don't have the problem with, which was done in the past, which is, here's a pot of money which is adequate for today's service level, and then, of course, if service levels increase, the pot doesn't change. And at least, as I understand this, it's tied to sales tax and the VLF fees, which will grow with the economy, and presumably will grow with the needs for providing higher levels of service or higher costs. Uh, but that's a very critical part of this process, is making sure that whether, it's not just whether or not funding would be adequate for today, is, is it going to be adequate five years from now, 10 years from now? If we've got, if we're stuck with the responsibility and the funding is not there, something has to give. So, that's a very critical part of this, this whole process. Of course, devil's is always in the details. This is where we have to be very, very careful of, of watching this whole thing, and not just watching from the sidelines, but participating through CSAC, through our, our own board trips if need be, and through our, our, um, delegation in Sacramento. And I heard Connie on this morning, on the radio this morning, and, uh, referring to this whole thing about, you know, there's, one of the things that they're trying to get from the Governor is, and from the state is, well, if you're shifting these burdens down to the local government, are you going to then eliminate the departments that are in Sacramento, which are now there with oversight and consuming all these dollars? And it's like, well, we're, we're thinking about it, or we're considering it. No, that's got to be part of the whole process. You've got to agree, if you, that's where the savings comes in. You're going to need to eliminate these positions, and maybe you add, you know, these departments, and maybe you, you add another additional attorney on the Attorney General's staff or on the Department of Finance to do the auditing and so forth, to make sure that things are, are on the up and up. But you eliminate these entire departments, and that's where you're going to save money, and you can send some of that savings down to the local government to pay for the cost of providing services, it's a win-win situation. But if you keep the infrastructure in place, then what have you gained? You know, I mean, those are the critical kind of things that, that have to happen. This is going to take very fundamental change at the state level. It's not a nibbling around the edge type of thing. If that doesn't work, we've got to have some fundamental changes.
Yeah, Supervisor Vanderpool?
Uh, go, go ahead, Kathleen, if you have any...
I was just going to say, the, um, CSAC's Cost Shift Committee has, as part of its recommendations, and there are many groups working feverishly to get information to the Governor, uh, that the state simply eliminate any statute or regulation that adds additional requirements to federal funds. Most of this is pass-through money that we're talking about, particularly in the social services area, and California has a ton of bureaucratic regulation that we're required to comply with that is not otherwise required. If we really are truly to have flexibility, I'm making air quotes for the benefit of anyone listening, um, my cynicism is showing, I know, um, then why wouldn't they do that? Why, why shouldn't that be done? And, uh, that's actively being pursued as part of, as you're discussing, the elimination of, of duplicate bureaucracies. Um, and if it doesn't happen, then the ability to save cost on the county level is, is no greater than it is today, right now. We still have to go through a lot of steps we wouldn't otherwise have to do.
Supervisor Vanderpool?
Just as the representative on the Mental Health Board for this Board of Supervisors, and also the voice for the Mental Health Board to the Board of Supervisors, I just have to say that, uh, obviously, like Supervisor Cox mentioned, the Prop 63, uh, funding that would be obtained through the state budget proposal would be absolutely devastating, uh, to, uh, the mental health community. Uh, we know that that's a, a bare-bones, uh, uh, group of services as it is already, um, and, and we cannot sustain any further cuts at all. Uh, and we do the best with the small amount of money that we get in our mental health community today, um, and, and taking anything from that would be, uh, just devastating. Um, and then also, just, uh, a couple other comments, I, you know, I, I have to say that the last time that we were up in Sacramento, it was very refreshing, uh, to have a group of legislators that was really listening to, uh, the Board of Supervisors and the ideas that we floated, um, and, and really by them acknowledging the fact that they hadn't even considered or heard, uh, some of these ideas, like sending the, uh, cancellation fees from the Williamson Act back to the county, or the elimination of the Department of Conservation, or, um, the fact that a lot of the legislators look at this situation and saying, "Okay, if we pass these mandates, we'll pass on the state funding, but we're also going to pass the ability to tax yourselves further, uh, to make up any funding gaps", and the fact that we made it very clear to them that, uh, we don't want that ability, we just want you to give us the ability to structurally alter these programs, um, a- and, and really, just that dialogue, it shows that legislators are relying upon us, the elected officials at lower levels, to give them input and feedback so that they can shape their ideas and proposals going forward as to how, uh, the, the shifting of services is going to fundamentally change California, so, just wanted to make that point.
Supervisor Ashida?
It's an observation, uh, we face every time that the state of California is short of funds. What it proves to me, you're a damn fool to vote for any funding proposition that's placed on the ballot by initiative, because the state of California will try to rob that money from its intended purposes every time. The only way you can really provide those services, or the services your communities need, is you have to impose a local sales tax revenue, or whatever revenue that you can do that comes directly to the, the county, and it stays in the county. But I, I'm really fed up with the fact that we pass a tax on the wealthy, 1% for First Five, pass the smokers' tax or sin taxes, we pass a mental health proposition, 63, for, uh, underserved people, and the state robs the money from those ballot measures that we've passed. So, reiterate again, I think, uh, I've learned that I'm not voting for any of those, because they're going to steal it.
I'm going to try to, no.
Well, and I, I also believe that the state of California needs to look at themselves, and they need to shrink their government. I haven't heard anything about that. We're going to get smaller, we're going to become leaner and meaner. No, we just want to lay everything off on the counties.
Well, that, when they, when I was at the CSAC Executive Committee, the, um, Governor's Finance Director did indicate that they are, in this plan is, uh, 25% reduction of state employees, so they're, they are looking at that, but I, I think, i- it, until, until you have a comprehensive plan that is definitive, I, I'm skeptical. I just don't, uh, you know, just to say that that's what they're thinking about, are they going to actually do it? I, I don't know. That's the thing, I mean, that we have to see. They're going to actually have to, they can't just be thinking about something, they're going to have to be doing something. And, uh, there's a big difference between those two worlds.
I'll be in Sacramento tomorrow, so we'll see what the latest flavor is there.
Okay, thank you, Gene, for that update, we appreciate it very much. And I think that concludes our Court of Supervisors meeting. Do we have need for closed session?
Chairman, F is off your agenda. On your Board's closed session agenda and addendums, you have otherwise, items A through G. I do anticipate announcements.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.
Balesley, County Council, in the matter of Item B, County of Tulare versus Viscatech. The, uh, Board voted to initiate litigation against Viscatech on the motion of Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpool, on a unanimous vote. The action has been formally commenced, and the defendant is Viscatech. The substance of the litigation is breach of contract. In the matter of Item C, on the Board's closed session agenda, the Board voted to authorize the initiation of litigation on the motion of Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Ashida, on a unanimous vote. The action to initiate litigation has been formally commenced, and the defendants are Defendant Prins, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that correctly, P-R-I-N-S, and the substance of the litigation is breach of contract, conversion, and goods had and received. Item E will be continued to February 14th, uh, excuse me, 15th, and there are no other announcements.